All right, I think we're close enough. We're going to go ahead and get started. Everybody will stand for the prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our many blessings. Please bless this meeting and the people it has met in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, we have a... Anybody have any public comment? You're welcome to speak at this time if you have anything that you would like to say. Okay. I guess we'll get on the first thing then. All right, we have a new police chief, David Forrest. So I need a motion to hire David Forrest as police chief.
I make a motion that we hire David Forrest and actually promote him to police chief.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And he also needs to increase the wage.
Yeah, sorry, I did have that, increase the wage.
Make a motion to increase the wage by $4 now.
Okay.
Second.
Did I hear it the first time?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah.
I.
Aye.
David Forrest.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of Missouri and will demean myself as a police officer and the chief of police of the city of Forsyth and honestly discharge the duties thereof while in office. Two best of my abilities, so help me God.
I will.
Yep. They're gonna do each other.
The guy's a kid clothes.
I know.
Congratulations, thank you.
Okay, stay there. Okay, I need a motion to appoint Steve Huggins as assistant police chief, salary unchanged.
I solemnly...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion to appoint Steve Huggins as assistant police chief, salary unchanged.
I solemnly...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. our country, I have asked the health department to come and speak and give us a little bit of information that they have on the virus itself. As you can see, our seating changed here today to do the two to three feet that the CDC recommends, distance from each other. We are... You should limit your handshaking to elbows or whatever. If you are not well, please stay home. And they have just sent out another meeting request that it's down to 10 people now. So take that into mind in anything that you go to that you might limit the amount of people that you are in a condensed area with. Okay? Let's speak.
So thank you for the opportunity, I greatly appreciate that. And we also appreciate the level of seriousness that you all are obviously taking to prevent the spread of the virus. So we greatly appreciate that. Currently, as we stand, Tany County has zero cases that are confirmed of coronavirus. And so I think that's something really important to take note of. Our state as a whole has six cases that have been confirmed. Three of those are in Greene County, so that is the closest county to us that is seeing cases at this point in time. So since mid-January, the Tany County Health Department has a team that's been meeting and talking internally, planning internally, just for what we need to do as a community. We've recently extended it out to a community task force that is involved. Obviously Nathan and many of our other first responders, those also that are part of keeping our communities healthy. So jurisdictions have been involved, they have healthcare systems that have been involved. Obviously, we're very involved. If anybody let me know. So I jumped in here, I think I'm forgetting something. So we've got quite a group that's working on this, and we are meeting weekly at this point in time, just really looking at what our community needs to do to be prepared, because we believe it's very important to be over-prepared in this situation. And so part of what we're working towards is what we call flattening the curve. I'm sure that you've heard that in the media, but looking at how we can reduce the rate at which this is transmitted through our community. So our main goal really is to reduce that burden on our healthcare system, because we realize when we... Our healthcare system becomes over-taxed, then that's when we really have the problems that can come along with this. At this point in time, we're still seeing the numbers hold true, that about 80% of individuals have pretty mild symptoms. It is a 20% that has the more severe symptoms that we are concerned about. And so a lot of our work to this point has been geared around outreach and planning with those high-risk populations. So, excuse me, we've done quite a bit of outreach in our communities, reaching out to our nursing home facilities, just reaching out to places where we feel like we'd be at risk of having more people in a condensed space that would help spread that illness. And so a lot of our outreach has been geared towards that. Also working a lot with our jurisdictions and our chambers to make sure that they have the most updated information and can help spread that word, how we keep our residents safe. So again, as you mentioned, things like the hand hygiene are huge in this. At this point in time, like you said, the 80% have pretty minor symptoms, they're treated at home, they resume normal life and move onward from there. So we feel like the more we can prevent or slow this transmission rate, we're going to be in a better situation. So what we're doing right now today, we actually had a press release that went out. We are following the CDC guidelines and then also the governor's recommendations. So as of today, we heard the number 10 come out. We have not seen that from the CDC as of the time I left my office. This is a very, very quickly changing situation, and so information is changing hourly. So at this point in time, we're recommending groups larger than 50 to either postpone or reschedule canceled events, and then just as a method of helping reduce that transmission in our communities. So we will follow the guidance of CDC. If they do come out and say the 10, then we will certainly put that information out as well. So I know there's a lot of concern, especially when our policies are very tourism-based. So we've had a lot of conversations with, excuse me, just our Chamber Branson in particular around the theaters and our lodging facilities and those sorts of areas where we feel like we have a lot of visitors coming and seeing those spaces. So we are certainly also starting to get a lot of questions about special events. I know the Hollister Chamber hosts a very large Easter egg hunt, they reached out. We did share these recommendations around the number of 15. And of course, if that changes with the CDC, we'll be sending our additional guidance there. But so we're starting to see a lot of questions around these events that are coming up as we're heading right into event season. So moving forward, the task force that meets weekly with all our community partners, we will continue that. Right now, we're still sending out information around preparedness, because we feel like that is really important. If people have not taken caution to that, they need to be sure that they're preparing for that. And then also who is in our high-risk group, so that anybody in that 20% that does fall in that high-risk group knows what they need to do. So those have been our steps to this point, and then of course, sharing the information as far as disinfection, and then also looking at this concept of social distancing, which you guys have done really well this evening. So adding that additional space in between folks, making sure that if somebody is ill, that you're not, spending time close to them, just kind of spacing people out, and then also looking at if you are at a high risk, you probably do need to be spending more time at home, limiting that exposure out in the community. So that's where we are to date. If you have anything to add, feel free, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer as well.
So as you said, you know, we've been meeting weekly for the task force, and that consists of, you know, other emergency management within the county, the ambulance district, hospital, you know, so trying to review as far as operations was, emergency responders, how we're going to respond, and what personal protective equipment we need and stuff. So that stuff is rolling out, that state is rolling out as well. You know, my position, obviously, if you guys have questions to me, or if, you know, it gets worse before it gets better, we want to plan for that. Emergency management side state has been activated, EMC has been activated. So if it gets beyond the local level that we can't handle, then our next step is to go to the county ELC and then make some requests to the state for whether, for more equipment or whatever that case may be. So and then obviously our partner, you know, making sure that we're doing what the health department is saying as well, you know, and sharing that information, you know, and just the bad circumstance all around, especially with spring break and special events and stuff, but we need to make sure it's safe for everybody and make sure it stays contained and goes away as fast as it can. So if you guys have any questions or particular stuff that you'd like me to see or help you with, you know, I can get up on contact as well, so.
Okay. I did go Friday and talked to Dr. Mangus at the Forsyth School District and to see what they were doing and how they were getting prepared for it. And he said since everyone on spring break this week, it kind of helped, and they are actually just kind of turning that place upside down, cleaning. And then they were going to have a staff meeting when they came back from the spring break, and now they've extended it to April 3rd. So we'll see what happens after that, but that's kind of where they were at. They were really diligent too, working towards making sure everything was clean there too. So anyway, and I think the senior centers are locked in lockdown.
Yeah, so most of the care facilities are in lockdown, you know, out of precautionary, you know, they don't want anything brought into there as well. So a lot of attorneys and meetings from state level to federal level has been canceled along with the rest of the schools. So I think they just have to look for the growth. So far, they're still open, but that could change, it's still fluid too, so they're going to get further.
Okay. We're really encouraging businesses to take as many precautions as they can, be rather over-prepare and be, you know, extra precautious. And so we've also had a lot of conversations with the business community on that front, how to keep their business safe and how we can take extra steps to keep our community safe. Just to mention something I forgot, is we do have testing available. So we have state health department test kits at the health departments, and those are available if you meet certain criteria. We also are seeing that our commercial testing options are coming online. I don't have information as to the date that they're planning on that, but I do believe that is, I would be getting to happen a little very shortly.
Okay. Okay. Could you share with us the guidelines for the testing?
The state criteria? So I don't have those with me, but I'm happy to send those your way.
Oh, great. I'll even post those.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're kind of, I think, in a beginning, it's a good point to, so basically the state health department test kits, those are largely for those. The criteria revolve around those that typically are pretty ill. So your general person that's the 80% that has the less severe symptoms, they'll probably receive commercial testing, and that is arranged through their healthcare provider. So I'm happy to send what the state requirements are at this point in time. And of course, it is changing hourly, whatever the situation is, so we'll send almost current information.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to have the second and final reading of bill number 523, Water and Sewer Services. I am going to read the entire thing, so bear with me.
Hold on.
Okay. Oh, sorry, you want me to put that on first?
Okay. I'll make the motion for the second and final reading of bill number 523, Water and Sewer Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know. Says whereas the city provides potable drinking, water, and sanitary sewer services within the city's corporate limits, whereas the city from time to time has need to change the rates for such services and for security deposits, whereas certain rates for such services need to be amended, certain security deposits for such services need to be amended. Now, therefore, it be ordained by this Board of Aldermen of the city of Forsyth, Missouri, as follows: The current rate for potable water service is 12.50 base rate, so $12.50, and 4.30 for 1,000 gallons of water use. The new rate for potable water service will be 12.50 base rate, 4.35 for 1,000 gallons of water use. The current rate for sanitary sewer service is 13.50 base rate, and 4.30 for 1,000 gallons of water use. The new rate shall be 13.50 for the base rate, $4.35 for 1,000 gallons of water use, so basically five cents. The current security deposits for potable drinking water services are $100 residential, $200 commercial. The new rate for sanitary sewer service for customers who do not have a metered water service is $25 per month. The new sewer connections shall be no less than $500. For any of the foregoing services that the city elects to provide outside the city's corporate limits, the fees, but not the deposits, set out above shall be 200% of the foregoing fees. The determination whether to provide such services outside the city's corporate limits shall be at the sole discretion of the Board of Aldermen on a case-by-case basis. As a condition to providing such services, the Board of Aldermen may require such concessions or conditions as to the Board of Aldermen seems reasonable in the circumstances, including an irreverible, not a good word for me, voluntary petition for annexation into the city of all lands served by such services. Yes. Just wanted to make sure I read that to everybody, because it seemed to be some concern that people hadn't got this the last time. We did have it out there, it is out there again, if you want to get a copy of it.
I think we need to move to that as well.
Pardon me?
Are we going to move to an act?
I make a motion that we accept the second and final reading of bill number 532 and enact into effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Got it. All right, thanks. And then that's a whole bunch. Okay. That's good. Okay. Intergovernmental agreement with Tany County, WT Oxidation Rotor Replacement Project. Chris?
Yes, ma'am. Before I get to that, I'd just like to touch back on the rates. The rates are raised, they're just not raised just all whim. We do a rate study, and by a state statute, we have to stay in front of the eight ball, meaning we can't lose money as a utility. We can break even and we can make money, but we just, by state statute, can't lose money. So Angela keeps a close eye on that and tells us where we're at with our, you know, revenues and spending, and where we need to be, and we try to stay up, you know, with the raises from the electric producers too, and then wastewater providers and the water providers, and, you know, everything, everything goes up. So we're not trying to make a lot of money, we're just trying to stay ahead of the curve. The wastewater treatment, that's wastewater treatment facility oxidation rotor, we have recently lost a bit. It's a big rotor that puts oxygen in the wastewater plant. There's four of those, and we have replaced three out of the four with the half-cent sewer sales tax money, which has been a huge help to us. And I can't say enough about that tax, because without that tax, this is $126,000 repair. So, and we've got four of them, and they've paid for three among a new million-dollar influence structure, several things over the years. All of our, we've got over 36 sewer lift stations that, you know, a new lift station's a hundred grand, and we have to upgrade those through the years. And without the help of this sewer sales tax, every one of your small communities, even your large communities, your rates would be affected greatly by those kind of repairs, because the repairs have to be made, no matter what, but it's just how you finance them. So this has been a huge, huge help for everybody in the community. So it's getting, the reason I say that, I'm leading up to this, is getting ready to sunset in 2021, and so it's something that the entire community needs to think about, getting behind and supporting that, so it doesn't affect your rates negatively. That being said, John Suti was going to be here tonight. Obviously, I told him that it wasn't really necessary for him, he was just in here to support. So what I need from you is, everybody's in agreement, the bids are in, they've elected a contractor to do the work, they just need the final step is you to agree and sign the agreement, and then it will go before the county commission, and the commission will approve it, and then the work will begin probably in a month and a half.
And then we will be reimbursed for the cost of the project.
And we will reimburse the cost for the cost of it. Yeah, we will have to pay it out of pocket if they will be reimbursed.
Won't, once the work starts, won't the city be most responsible for dealing with the contractor then?
Well, they have an engineer, inspector that they will be dealing with, but mainly us.
Right. So I was...
Most of them have a third-party engineer.
If the county picked the contractor, if you were happy with...
No, it would be us.
You, okay.
Yeah, you know, they already went out, the contracting, the company that we buy the equipment from, they sent out the specs, and then the company's bid on it, and then they accepted the bid.
Okay.
So it's all done through the Lakeside Equipment Corporation, which is, it was a, what do they call it? A single, a sole source. It's the only, only piece of equipment that will fit in this, so there wasn't a lot of people that could bid on it. So Lakeside Equipment is the only company that handles this in this area. So then we told them what we need, they sized it up, spec it up, then they picked the contractor, which, it's a really good contractor, it's the contractor that actually built our treatment plant.
Okay, so that was my question. Are you happy with them?
Yes.
Chris, how long would you anticipate this to take from the time they start to finish?
I would say less than two weeks.
It's pretty fast.
It's, I mean, yeah, it's not a huge deal, it's just a big, looks like a big giant hair, the old hairbrush rollers around, it's just a huge, about as long as this room. They just have to pick it up with a crane, set it back, new bearings and new motors. So it's not, it's not a long project, but very costly.
Good motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the signing of this, so that we can move forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, discuss the JMU C agreement for bio solids, Chris.
I put that on the agenda because we're trying to, it's how attorneys are about finding new language to, the present company excluded. We're trying to hammer out between several attorneys and agreement that we can all agree on, so right at the last minute, there was more that needed to be done. But I know we got a full boat tonight, so I won't go into it a lot. The JMU is a joint municipal utility corporation. That is a big mouthful for the Tri-Lex Bio Solids Coalition that we're a part of and have been for several years. We take all of our sludge, now we don't land it, we take it to this operation, and they make the fertilizer out of it, and that's at the city of Branson's treatment plant, it's a great project. When we got the original $2 million grant from the DNR, part of the stipulation was that the county had to remain ownership of this entity for two, for five years. So that time has come, in May as a matter of fact. So we as a board, we have decided to become an entity ourself, and so we had had people looking into what kind of organization we could be as just spokespeople from cities, and this is, this is what we are part of. So it's called a JMU, and I will be bringing you the final, final agreement when it's hashed out. It should be by May meeting, is what they're saying, at least by May meeting. And things won't be any different, won't cost any more or any less, it's just we own it now, we have a small stake in it. So Rockaway, Galena, Sparta, Branson, Hollister, Red Spring, who am I missing?
Rockaway.
Kimlick City's not in it?
No.
That's the only one.
Yeah, Rockaway.
Yeah, got it.
That's it.
Yeah, so it's, it's started out in Tany County, and we've got obviously a couple of them outside of Tany County. And it's just a way for them to take their sludge, which city of Branson was really under the gun, they had to, they were running out of farm fields and places to spread it. And so we come up with this idea 15, 16 years ago, Larry Van Gildor and Rick Zieggentrust and myself and Mike Ray, we all got together and meet once a month, and so now they've taken millions and millions of gallons of sludge that have been spread on Tany County land, and it's now made into a fertilizer that the, we have farmers come over with the fertilizer buggy, and they just fill them up, and they take it and spread it on the property. It's a Class A product, which means all the pathogens have been killed. Before, it wasn't. It was Class B product, and it was still good fertilizer, but there were still pathogens, which could find your way into your aqua, for your crease in your legs and stuff. So it's a good organization to be a part of. Anytime you guys have, I could talk about it all night, so I'm not going to, but anytime you got any more questions on it, just give me a call, and I will have an agreement before we forward coming.
Thank you. Okay. Nate, you got a verified approval of Lynn Eschens and Lauren Edmonds?
Yeah, so you should have their application in the packet there. I have Lynn Eschens, actually she's our Eschens, she's the mother of Jacob Eschens that we approved last agenda, our last board meeting. Lynn is joining as a support team member, and then Lauren Edmonds is joining as a firefighter position. So I have both of their applications that I'd like to get through tonight. I have Lauren Edmonds behind me, and Miss Lynn directly behind her. So I'd ask you guys for approval for the process.
Motion to approve both of those.
Motion to... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, did they say vote?
Aye.
Okay.
Never mind.
See, I'm cool with Lynn. Thanks. We appreciate you girls, so.
Thank you.
All right, accept FEMA funds and authorize fire chief Nathan Bauer to sign documents.
So, not funny, but I guess, we've already received the money, the funds for the first portion, this was from the flood, DR 4451, that was the last time the Sharrow Park flooded. And so we took this while we get through the process and stuff. So the first initial funds is about $7,594.54, which the cities already received, and that paid for basically the cleanup cost of the park, and then there are two other fund amounts that would be coming would be for the painting and the repairs for the paint costs and labor on that, and then some administration, we added some administration hours to it this time, so trying to recover that. But basically, I just need your permission to sign this document and send it back to SEMA and finish that off, so.
I make a motion that we approve Nathan being able to sign this agreement at time for...
and finish that off, so.
I make a motion that we approve Nathan being able to sign this agreement at time four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Now we have first reading of bill number five-two-four, authorized collection of court automation fees. Angela?
This is one of the steps to moving to the new Show Me Courts portal, Show Me Courts, Show Me Courts portal, yes, for the court system. It's required that we now begin collecting the seven-dollar court automation fee for every case that is passed through municipal court.
Okay.
I make a motion, we have the first reading of bill number five-twenty-four.
Second. Do you want to do that by title only?
Read it?
Ordinary, I'm going to do it by title only.
Just title only? Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Bill?
Yep. Bill number five-twenty-four, ordinance of many section one-ten-point-two-six-oh of the city code concerning municipal court cost.
Motion to approve first reading by title only of bill number five-twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need to... Okay. We have Omnigo software quote for a P A portal. Show Me Courts required.
This is another step in the Show Me Courts process. This will provide the electronic transfer of tickets from the police department to the prosecutor, to the courts. And I think, I don't have the quote in front of me, but it's in your packets. It also includes the e-ticketing software, which will allow the officers to print tickets in car and not have to worry about our handwriting and things like that. It'll print a paper ticket.
It's a sole source.
Yes, this is a sole source. It's the current software company that the police department uses for their records management system. Existing vendor.
Motion to approve the court and authorize the payment thousand four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, authorized open a bank account for Show Me Courts, exception to city policy.
Our current city financial policies require that an account that's opened in the name of the city must be approved by city council, and that it must have the four bank signatories that are determined to be the mayor, the president of the board, the city clerk, and the finance officer. This particular account cannot have those people as signatories. There are two signatures required. One is the court clerk, which in this case also happens to be the finance officer, and another person, which I presume the judge will be willing to sign the signature card. But I wanted to make you aware that that was an exception to our existing policy.
If we transfer to the circuit courts?
The accountable, accountable way.
Right.
I make a motion to authorize the exception to the policy for this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discuss and approve to move municipal court to Tany County Court.
Sent a memo a month or so ago to talk about transferring our court into the circuit. As we talked about, the Supreme Court is requiring some things that are going to be expensive to the city in terms of building alterations and changes in procedures. On the pro side of moving things to, to the circuit court, we would have a little bit of cost savings. We would not be paying for a judge or any of the supplies that we currently use for court or a clerk. And the processing is not expected to be considerably different than going through our municipal court as far as the defendants go. The cases will be filed, bill will prosecute, the judge will pronounce findings of guilty, not guilty, and sentenced defendants. They have some additional tools to use in collecting those fines that we do not have as a municipal court, including the collection agency that the state authorizes and the use of tax refund capture. If we're not too low on the list, we might collect some fines that way. I would not expect that the amount of fines collected would be considerably more or less than what we're collecting now, which is between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars a year.
We met with Beth Flyman here, Angela and I did. She kind of did a little bit of an audit of our system and, and gave us the changes that needed to be made. There are some changes that would require this to make this facility workable for a court that might be above what we want to do here. So, you know, it's, it may behoove us to go to the Tany County courthouse.
And is it not also possible that we might have to add another staff person?
Correct.
To have a, to have a replacement or deputy court clerk? Because the duties of the city executive cannot overlap with the city judiciary. You have to have a separation of powers.
You do, you can't have the same window, cannot take money through the same window as the city clerk's window. And so we would have to put in another window somewhere here, and...
And that's just what's required now.
Yeah.
The, I think it is the trend of the Supreme Court, which has superintending power over all courts, as it is already, and mostly the legislature too, most of the legislature, to put municipal courts out of business and to make them all have to go to courthouses.
A couple of other municipals have already completed this process, and Woods and Rockaway have moved their courts. And Larry has asked that I contact them and get some more insight from how they have reacted to what's going on.
And nobody likes this, when we have a wonderful municipal judge that we need to lose.
We do, and he will be retiring on twelve, twelve of twenty, when he ages out.
Yes, but, you know, it's just not going to be the same.
It won't be the same, but...
Oh, I mean, the judge that we're going to get is also a fine judge. Absolutely no criticism of him at all.
So I'll bring more information back.
Are we expecting this to be finalized by the end of the year? Is that what the goal is, or do we not quite know yet?
That would be the goal with Mike Merrill's retirement on twelve, twelve. We have to give the circuit six months' written notice of our intent. And then there is a four-page checklist of things that have to happen before the transfer can actually be made. And we have, we need to talk with Judge Amy and see where, where we stand. For side municipal court is not a large court, but his workload is pretty heavy. And we want to be sure that he can, has the capacity in his courtroom and the clerk's office to take our cases.
So Mr. McCullough, you think it would be the best, in the best interest for the future?
Yes, I think it's inevitable. I don't, I don't like it a bit. I don't think any of us do, but...
Well, we're going to have to spend money to build a new payment window. We're going to have to spend money to hire another employee. We're still going to get the same fees back from the tickets. So I, I don't see that, that there is any hesitation on my part, but to go ahead with this.
And there again, I believe the courts and the legislature are going to keep moving to the goalposts.
Right.
To the point, I mean, if, if we incur those expenses and jump through those hoops, next year, there are going to be more honors and stringent requirements.
Well, we have to give six months' notice. So by June, we need to tell them.
Yes.
And you're going through the steps right now of what we have to...
Trying to organize what we'll need to do.
Good.
And then we'll have, what, about a seventh-month dry run with the Show Me Portals in doing the electronic tickets while we're, while we're still here.
Because that will, will actually be the same if we move to the circuit. All the things we're doing for the, in the police department and with the P A portal are things that will have to be done at that level as well. So we'll have some practice time.
And we'll have some track record with it, I'm sure you're against.
Okay.
Do we want to approve?
Do you want to approve? Go ahead, not, not until we're all ready, right, until...
I think Larry had more questions than me.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Okay, reaffirm the vote. Okay, so we need to vote on the ordering the five bulletproof vests, which should be in any day, I would say. And we could not wait on those. They were going to expire. And granted, the, the bulletproof vest doesn't expire, but the warranty expires. And as you saw last night with the issue that happened in Springfield, we certainly do not want our police officers at risk in any way, shape, or form. So we need to have those vests, and believe it or not, it takes two to three months to get them. So we have them coming in, should be any day. We have one here, if you guys would like to... One came in today. Oh my gosh, that's happened.
Yeah. Greg, here you go. So we can't really take it out of packaging, because there's lots of parts and pieces. But we have the outer carrier for the vest with the officer's name on it right here. And then the actual vest is on the backside. We've got four more, five more coming, yes. Five more coming. This was ordered before any of the others, that's why it's here a little sooner. So this, we're going to the outer carrier blackboard. So instead of the internal carrier like we're having now, these are, allows the officer to put his, his tools of the trade on the front of the vest, which gives them a little more flexibility, saves on some wear and tear on the back, things like that. And these are easier to take on and off. So when you come into a hot building or something like that, to your reports, you can take this off and kind of, kind of breathe. These are very restrictive and very hot. It's the officer's preference. But if you see some guys running around out there like this, they're going to wear these outer carriers and have this stuff on there. They come with the pouches and everything on there. And these are a, they're very nice, very well-made vests.
Very heavy. Okay, I need a motion...
I make a motion to approve the order of the bulletproof vest.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approve payment of invoice for the six bulletproof vest, I can't say it. Five thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Motion to approve the payment of the invoice for the six bulletproof vest.
You're kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approve upgrade of existing computers, purchase three desktops for police department, and purchase two laptops for S M C for judge and prosecutor for Calypso Consulting, from Calypso Consulting. So Angela, do you want to...
I've got pricing from our existing vendor for I T services and supplies, and he generally finds us the best price that he can find out there. The upgrades with the solid-state hard drives for six computers and installing Windows ten will be approximately twenty-two-hundred dollars. And then you've got two choices in desktop computers for the police department. I would assume that the G four is acceptable, the less expensive model. That total for the three is three thousand fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. There would be a small amount of labor to get those set up and installed. And then the laptops for Show Me Courts would total two thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-two cents, again with a little bit to get those set to the network, so that they're functional and wireless and all those things.
Total's about...
Technology's expensive.
What's the total?
It's about a little over seven thousand dollars, plus some labor.
And how does this fit with our budget?
Well, some of it is probably absorbable in equipment costs, but it will require a budget amendment, as will the vests and the remaining items that we're purchasing tonight on the agenda. All of those things, we will, we will amend the budgets for next month and bring us up to speed. We are spending from reserves on these items. They're not items that are purchased often. The cameras, I would call a capital expenditure, they're not just a disposable piece of equipment. And so out of the reserves, we've spent very cautiously for several years to build that reserve. And this is how we are able to do these somewhat unexpected costs on short-term.
Except we didn't, we didn't foresee these expenses when we made the budget.
No, we did not.
So we have to adjust the budget to match what we have to buy.
Yeah, and we've talked about maybe getting some replacement schedules put into the city hall here where, for each department, so that we can balance these out just a little bit better. So I will be talking to every one of the department heads about that. Nate Prewell has his already under control, so I'm just going to meet with David on his.
And this is not just an, I, well, gee, let's spend this money. These are things that we really need to upgrade and to do.
Right.
To make sure that we're in compliance with everything.
Correct. So...
I make a motion, we approve the estimated seven thousand dollars for these upgrades.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, next expensive purchase, body cams and car dash cams. I've had Officer Huggins and our new chief here all looking for quotes in different body cams and car cams for our officers, so, to protect them. And they, this is, they've got a bid here that, actually a couple, I think, that you have, so... Okay, we have one from Digital Ally. For twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. David, would you like to go over with all that?
Yes.
Or Steve, either one of you, both of you?
So what we're getting with all this is we're getting a body camera and an in-car camera. Digital Ally also provides software to where the in-car camera and camera will download to a server, so we can save the video footage. This also provides some other options. The, the body cameras and, and the in-car cameras will coexist with each other. So when an officer initiates a stop or anything like that, the body cam, the car camera kicks on and also turns the body camera on as well. So when he gets out to go to talk to a person at the traffic stopper or go into a house or anything like that, they have that constant feed of video footage. As far as with the other things it comes with, it comes with a lot, a lot of features that are pretty much what we need. The cars will automatically download themselves when they pull up to the police department. We don't have to worry about, about touching them. They download to the server. It saves that evidence or that, that footage automatically. And these, I just recently taught... And these, I just recently talked, spoke with a sheriff at another agency that had a high complaint rate on deputies and officers at that agency. When they implemented the body camera dash camera, they dropped their complaint rate down to two percent. So it shows that they had, you know, people were doing the right thing at the right time. And then we have video footage to prove it.
Is the server a city server or a cloud server?
It's going to, it's a, they're certainly, they supply a computer workstation. Because if we ever have to pull footage from that, we have to have a computer workstation so we can pull a CD off or forth. So it will download to this workstation. And then it goes to there.
The server's on site.
Yeah, it's on site.
So both, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's even a-
We don't have the solution.
They'll stand-
That's part of it.
They'll stand by the product, they'll provide support for the life of it. And I think there's a five-year warranty even to start with, which is pretty good, so.
Is this the only firm that can give us a bid on this, or do we have a competitive bid coming?
We were waiting for another bid from, what's that?
WatchGuard.
WatchGuard. And they're, for some reason, they're dragging their feet on us, so.
Are other agencies promoting Digital Ally or?
Yes, I've talked to the chief in Branson West, and that's what they use, and he talks, spoke highly of it. I did also speak with an officer at Branson PD, and they utilize the WatchGuard, but they're a lot higher priced. So with what we, the research we did on this and working with the representative that helped us with it, we're impressed with Digital Ally and their proven products.
Okay, just to refresh my memory, the automation of this stuff is acted, enacted when the colored lights are flipped on?
It goes by two ways. So if you initiate your, you can, and that's where when it's installed, there's quite a bit to go to it. So how it works is you have a front-facing camera, you have an in-the-car camera that points toward the officer that's driving, and you also have one that goes to your backseat where, in the cage portion. When you, you can activate these multiple ways. You can push a button on, to turn them on, you can turn the lights on, or you can reach up and turn your body camera on manually. So if you don't need all the other, you can just reach up and turn it, or you can turn it on just by a push of a button and everything turns on.
And is this, this bid includes all those?
It includes everything except for the installation. And the installation is, we spoke with a person that does all of our radar certifications that works with Digital Ally. He can install them. Since this is a very technical and very expensive item, I'd rather have it installed by somebody that installs these normally. We've been talking to him about installation. He said he could do the installation training, because we're going to have to have training on how to use these, how to turn them on, off, and download, and how these things work. He can do it for an estimation of around four hundred dollars per car.
And that's the guy that?
Yes, that will do the installation. It's on here, it says installer Jeff McLean. He also does our radars and makes sure our radars are certified every year. So that is the cost that is not included.
What's the life expectancy or warranty on these?
That is a good question.
Well, there's a five-year warranty.
Warranty. But it's the, it's the, the complete kit has a five-year warranty on it.
But it's like everything that they're taking care of, they'll last for years.
Did I understand before that when you turn your red lights on, that the cameras go on automatically?
Yes. And it backs up a little bit. So how they normally work is they'll back up for about thirty seconds or so when you turn the lights on. So you catch it a little bit beforehand. And then they have, the microphone and everything will connect with your body camera.
And is it also true that an officer can't delete something if they're out on a call? Because it is, here is what is there.
Yeah, when they, it downloads, they can't, they cannot tamper with the footage or anything. It downloads itself.
And they automatically download when an officer is coming into the police department to work on a report or whatever. As soon as the car gets within so many feet of the server, it automatically downloads to it. So it's not up to the officer to come in and download that footage to the server. It automatically does it. It's all filed away and separated, and we have to have, you know, somebody's going to have to be dedicated to work with that evidence, because that's what it is, is video evidence. We can, we can just file stuff in there like we would a file cabinet, by case numbers.
My only hesitation is I'd like to see the other bid.
We can do that.
But even if they fax it to us, and it's a thousand dollars or a hundred dollars higher, so we can justify accepting a single bid.
Okay.
That would be a request.
You can do that from table this and-
Okay.
Okay. Replacement of in-car computers?
Yes, we got, we got one bid on this one as well. We've tried to get several other bids. I've called two or three other companies. And they don't give us what we are asking for. Talked to Verizon, and they never sent me a bid. These are going to, what, Tany County is already using. We can, they found out it costs about five thousand dollars per car to use a Toughbook. But they found that they could go to a tablet and it does the same thing. The tablets are a lot easier to use and operate. And there, you can buy about three or four tablets for one cost of these Toughbooks. And this is what they're using, it's been proven to work. And that's what we're going with there on these. With the, the guy that I talked to on the SHI company has these. We're in stock now, the Surface Pro 6 tablets, what they're using. And this is the rock bottom price they're giving us on these. It helps us because we have, with the Show Me Courts, we're going to have to use ticket printers. We have the printers already, they were in stock, so that's, we already have those. We'll just need to install these in these cars and talk to Almanago. And they are already ready for us to get started on the ticket printers. So with that, also, this is with mapping, the mapping software that goes with it. So every car will be on map in our area. And when we get an agency to assist with Tany County, and sometimes we do go beyond our jurisdiction to assist them, we'll have that mapping. And that gives Tany County Dispatch knowledge of where our location is. So if something does happen, they know where we're kind of located at. And right now, we don't have that option.
The laptops we have right now are about eleven years old, still operating with Windows 7, and Microsoft's not even going to support Windows 7 anymore here shortly.
It expired in January.
Yeah, so anytime now, they could just quit working. The ones that do work, we have a few that don't work. So they're old and they're outdated. But those laptops that we have, they're Tough, they're called Toughbooks. I think Panasonic makes them. And they're right at six thousand dollars a unit with the docking station. And we're looking at tablets here for roughly, what does it say, around twelve to fifteen hundred dollars complete, per unit. Then we'll do the same thing that the Toughbooks do.
And since these are Microsoft Surface, they work like a computer does. And I don't know if you guys know anything about Microsoft Surface, tablets, but they do, they work just like a, with a keyboard, they work just like a laptop does.
How durable are they? Officer dragging them out of the car.
Well, they can take you in on calls with them to fill out. If they drop them, you know, obviously you take a chance on shutting a screen. They'll have cases on them, which might not protect a screen if it hits the ground just right. But even though if we have to replace one, we're still looking at a lot less than we are a Toughbook.
Do they offer insurance on them?
I don't know if we checked on insurance.
Not on these, they don't. These are purchased outright items. They're not giving us insurance on these. And when I talked to Verizon for that, they were saying that they could try, but they can't give us the options that we need. We have to, we have to have a way to type without typing on the screen. So they can't, they can't give us both options for the same, the same package, where they have to have a extra keyboard that goes with it. So to be able to type in our citations, because they're not going to be handwritten anymore, we'll type in what we need on there.
I think it would be good to have something in the file documenting the other sources that you solicited and get their responses in the file to justify a single source. Yeah. Is this, they've got it in stock on hand where we can?
They do, the Surface Pro 6s, they have a limited number left before they go to the Surface Pro 7s, which are a couple of levels higher, I think.
Yeah, they're a lot higher.
Yeah. But they had, last check, they had, I think the salesman said they had about twenty left of the Surface Pro 6s. We're still saving a ton of money compared to the Toughbooks.
Look, I just made the statement about the other thing, not having a second bid, but I think we should go ahead with this, with your, both of you and Sheriff's Department and everybody else.
We did contact Danny Staudt with the Sheriff's Department. He does all their technology stuff. This is, this is the company they went with to get their tablets.
If you guys could put a, just write down a little narrative about the things that you've done.
Yeah. Yeah, just type our reports in.
That'd be perfect.
The whole, and so they've made some cars too.
Well, he's talking about a narrative, typing what you've done for other quotes.
Just what he told.
Right. Gotcha.
Told the board. I'd make a motion, we go ahead and approve this bid of seven thousand five hundred and forty-sixty-eight, so we can move on with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Administrators report, Chris.
Couple things. We were slated to start our street overlays, the remainder of it, this week, but obviously with the weather, they're going to be pushing it off. They're going to start up around the schools since spring break. They're supposed to start tomorrow, but from what I've been told, they're not going to start, and they don't give me a good date until the weather's over when they are. So when it is, we'll try to get information out to people that get it around so everybody knows, and they're going to start on Panther, then Coy, and then the neighborhoods around there, and then go to Lookout Acres, Black Hawk, Casey Heights, that area first. And then obviously, they'll finish up what they have down Shadow Rock Drive by the post office, and down in front of Shadow Rock Lodge. All of that will be done. Some other areas that didn't get finished last time, so that's coming up. We scheduled another Ozarks Water Watch, it's an organization. If you guys haven't heard of it, I suggest you get on there and look and see what they're all about. We partner with them each year on a Bull Shoals Lakeshore cleanup. And I wanted to give you the date, it's June 27. And it's with Ozarks Water Watch. And if anybody wants to come in, volunteer to bring your boat or just be a volunteer, come down and help those with this. It's a good time, and a lot of nice folks over there. Lastly, I'd much like to give some kudos to the Public Works guys. They're kind of unsung heroes, you don't hear about them a lot, but really, there's a bunch of guys that are pretty well-rounded and their talents. They, you know, they save us money every day. We didn't have to hire a chain link fence installer, they just kind of figured it out on their own. They're carpenters, they're brick masons, they're just a well-rounded unit. So they take care of a lot, especially with the flooding that we've had. They're in charge of cleaning Shadow Rock Park up every time. And that in itself is a job. I'll keep all the ditches from flooding, culverts clean, things like that. We have two treatment plants, a lot of people don't know that we take care of, and five wells and several towers. So they take care of everything. Plow and snow, I just can't say enough about them. So if you get a chance to see one of them, shake their hand and tell them thanks for what they do. That's all I've got for right now.
I don't know if any of you have been up to the Shoals Bend Park, but if you haven't, you should see it. They've done an amazing job, and it is a great park that the park board has done an amazing job of getting the equipment to, so anyway. All right, minutes, special meeting February 6th and meeting February 10th. Motion to approve both February 6th and February 10th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 6th meeting and the February 10th meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, bills for approval.
Motion to approve the February 13th bill, seventy-two thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. February the 20th, sixteen thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. February the 27th, seventeen thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. March the 5th, forty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents. And March the 12th, four thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, financial statements ending January 31st, 2020, and February 29th, 2020.
Thanks to the shingles, I missed your meeting for the January 31st financials, so these are included behind all of the February financials. And I thought we probably should just focus on the February stuff, since that's what's most current. We are fifty percent through our fiscal year. Our collections of revenues in the general fund are over fifty percent, which is what we would expect with the lump sum of property tax that comes in December, November, December. Our expenses are less than fifty percent, is what we have budgeted. So we are well within our numbers as far as what we've got. Water sewers in the same position, we're just equal. What we've collected and what we have yet to collect, pretty much the same numbers. And I think we are two-thirds of the way through on the street project. And that's reflected in the page five of the revenue and expense report. We have about five hundred, four hundred thousand dollars left to spend on the street project. And our first bond payment is going to be upcoming in the next two weeks. So we are on track for what we expected for this year so far.
Motion to approve, been asked to stay, including January 31st and February 29th, 2020.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of transfers from February 13th, 2020, through March 12th, 2020.
Motion to approve the transfers as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Park Board update.
I also want to express appreciation to Chris's team, because the parks do look great, and the chain link fence looks great up at Shoals Bend Park. We have a softball league maybe starting in April. If anybody knows teams that want to get involved, it's co-ed.
It's outside, and you would be more than three feet from your partner.
It's outside, yes, yes. So come in and apply, get your team name in there if you're interested in that. The status of the previously discussed expansion of the boys- The status of the previously discussed expansion of the Boys and Girls Club Trail is kinda in hiatus. Right now, we're waiting for the school to decide if it's in their best interest to allow us to use land if that were to be the case. So, we're waiting on their board meeting on the 24th, to see if they will go ahead and let collaboration get together and use some of the school's land that's up behind, is it Swan, Swan Valley? That's, that's the part we're asking about, up there, so, so that the new trail, if we did expand it, would have access from Swan Valley. Without the school's land, probably not gonna be very good access. So, we're waiting on that, and then I think the next step would be a community meeting to get everybody's head together on what, how to expand that trail for, so. It's kinda on hold, yet to find out with the school. Egg hunt is April 4th, up at Shoals Bend Park. A lot of entities being involved in that, the Chamber is getting, they're involved, Bloom Church, the Tanney County Par, or, sorry, Fair Board, my bad, is, is involved, and so hopefully, you know, we'll have to see what's happening with the restriction on numbers, so, we'll get that out, we'll talk with the folks that are putting so much time in on it. But that's April 4th, right now, 10:00 at 2 o'clock. And then the, the last thing I wanted to mention, Christiana, you mentioned at the last park board meeting, are you still interested in stream testing? Are you planning on that, or is it...
Um, so, that, we will start that up in the summer. We are still deciding internally if, right now, we are going to join another team, or if we'll adopt our own. So, by next year, we'll more than likely have our own adopted for sure, but we're still seeing where our resources need to be, and if we can do that, but it's in the works, so...
Good. And did you still have the gentleman that is interested in the mosquito monitoring?
No.
Okay.
No, he's interested in it, again, resources at the moment, so, it might be brought up at another time. And then, sorry, since you brought that up, I just get some confused faces, but the stream team monitoring is just, we just trained with Department of Natural Resources, and I work for the Health Department. And we basically start with just kind of checking the water quality of all the streams around here, so, you know, we adopt our one spot, and then we test it each year multiple times, and then throughout the year, so that we can kind of see how that's changing, you know, give information back to the community, so, that's pretty much that, so...
Okay. That's all I have from the park board. Did you have anything?
I had a couple things.
Okay.
First of all, I'm very interested in that program.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I saw some anything we can do to help with that.
Okay.
Secondly, we're going to, I meant to say, well, I go, but I wanted to wait for the park update, we're going to be replacing the two old merry-go-rounds in the park. I think I played on them as kids, so that is about how old they are. No comments.
Before the, the little ball bearings.
Yeah, they didn't have bearings. But that's where we get close complaints, and it's hard to keep them together, and the bearings we're replacing every year, so, Greg, I want to enlist your help to do some research. The ones that I'm looking at from Miracle Playground Equipment, which supplied our others, they look very inexpensively made compared to Old Trustee Rusty, it's been there for 50 years. I just wanna make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck, so, they're, they don't longer call them merry-go-rounds, they're called whirls.
Yes, I saw that.
Catching you up to the flingos, so, let's do some research on some whirls.
Good.
Use your help.
I have one more question. I know it's still really tentative, but how quickly after the school's board meeting do you think that community meeting would be? Would it be like within a week, or, just what are you thinking there, just for...
Probably would talk about it at the next park board meeting, I would think.
Okay.
And then...
That would be April 1st, our next park board meeting?
Yes.
But pending what the...
Right.
Medical situation is.
So, probably April 1st would be the discussion.
Okay.
At the earliest.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, okay. Have a motion?
I'd just like to have everyone put the Springfield Police Officers and their thoughts and prayers, and appreciate...
All those people.
All of us guys, and their families, and...
And the other victims.
And appreciate, you know, just make us, make us know how much we appreciate you guys.
Yes, we do.
Anything can happen at any moment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate you all.